Good evening and welcome to December 18th City Council Meeting. You may join me for a moment, Silas and Pudgeleons.
All right, Ms. Zralowski, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk. Michelle Volk.
Here.
Lou Kellier.
Here.
John Bermal. Dan Walter. Joshua Lee.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anybody to share thoughts or concerns about issues that are not on the agenda. If there's something on the agenda, we can take time for comment then. Typically try to keep that up to three minutes. If you do have a comment, you can come up to the rostrum, say your name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy holidays. My name is John Ness, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Just be brief comments here. I'm speaking to you about the potential residential development of the 14-acre parcel at Kenwood Trail Middle School. As I'm sure you're aware, the district did not engage stakeholders in this parcel sale before the agreement was approved. You may be aware, Aaron Adler, Star Tribune reporter, is planning on writing an article about that, and that we expect that to be published after the first of the year. As I'm sure you're also aware, the parcel at Kenwood is guided for quasi-public use by the city's 2040 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And as such, Lennar and the school district must jointly apply for amendment to the comprehensive plan use to change the land use to low-density residential for this proposed development to move forward. Jason has helped me distribute a flow diagram which I created with the help of Daryl, Maury, and Tina Goodroad, depicting the amendment's approval process for all you. And I posted it on Facebook such that the citizens engaged in this topic can focus their energy in the proper area in the city decision-making process. Now, I understand the city has not received the preliminary sketch plan as of Friday or the amendment application from Lennar, but when it does, I encourage the city staff and city council members to push Lennar and the district to co-host a neighborhood meeting to gather feedback from stakeholders. We expect to have at least two petitions to present to Lennar and the district at that time. This meeting should occur as early as practical in the approval process and well before the complete plan and applications go to the planning commission. This would be our request. The stakeholders were not consulted during the initial negotiation between Lennar and the district, but please do not let that happen again with the city, whom I trust it will not. Stakeholder input is important to build the public's trust in the process and to influence decision-makers earlier versus later. So with that, I leave you with the process. So the key idea here is that there's a recommended community meeting happening when the plan document is, when the proposed sketch plan is received by the city. We need to encourage Lennar and the district to make that meeting happen. And I expect there to be a robust feedback from the community on this topic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ness. And I'm going to hang on to this for future development so that they know the process, so thank you.
Of course, you want a PDF copy? I can send you one.
Yeah, thank you. As I think we've said at our work session, we will continue to keep folks in line. Mr. Miller, I don't think anything's been submitted?
No, not yet.
Okay, so just continue to stay in touch with us as this kind of goes through the process. Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, additional agenda information, Mr. Miller.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to presentations, introductions, five, recognition of Lakeville Arena's staff. And I think we'll turn it over to Brian. Yep.
I had a group of us here. My name is Brian Arneson. I'm the president of the Lakeville North Boys Hockey Club. You guys can join me. So anyways, thanks for having us. Mr. Miller was kind enough to get us on the agenda. Today's a good news story. If you guys want to come up, I don't know. But we're here to recognize the arena's team and these two gentlemen specifically for the work that they've done. There's a near-term thing that was accomplished. And I just think it's important to highlight that it's really a public and private partnership. So as a booster club, you can imagine we're raising funds and trying to do more. Our focus is on building community. And in order to do that, we're trying to make hockey games more engaging, more fun for the youth and for all those that attend. So we've made an investment in the arenas. So we've donated thousands of dollars to put on a light show and an experience. So you'll get to see that in a video here shortly. And it's been wildly successful and people are excited about it. In order to achieve that, we could not have done it with the budget we have without the partnership of these two guys here. So number one, I just want to highlight Joe Berquist, the manager of the arenas, just his openness to even partner and talk about how to accomplish this together and figure it out. There was a lot of heavy lifting, and Joe clearly is an electrician as well, trying to get things done, especially last-minute things. And then Nick, the operations manager, Nick Ames, also helped do a lot of the work. So when it came to hands-on, running all the wires, setting up the lights, an overnight shift, literally, to pull this off for a home opener, all of that came to be. So they deserve the recognition for that specifically, and you'll get to see it. Since we're here, we thought we'd just highlight a couple of other things that have improved over the last couple of years with not just these two guys' help, but the arena's team. A couple of things are the ice club membership. It has changed the way that the hockey players in the community leverage the rink. And they've figured out a way how to take essentially dead ice and make it available for many to benefit. So I know my family and many others belong to that membership, and our kids enjoy and play stick and puck. A few years back, you couldn't even play stick and puck. It was just open ice. So it really has changed the way the hockey players use the city's facility that's being run by the arenas, and good outcomes accordingly. We also have the arena upgrades, so the new paint, all those things that came with the actual new rinks, but plenty of other things. It's a very welcoming place. We're proud of the rink, or rinks, I should say, and the way they run this place. It's really top-notch. The concessions, I mean, before it was, you know, like, maybe they'd be open and limited options. It's like a full-service deal now. The options are extensive and seemingly always open, which is very nice because early mornings, who doesn't need a cup of coffee when you're there watching your kids play? And including the addition of skate sharpeners, newer skate sharpeners, and the consistency and ease of use of all of this. And I'm just naming a few. So they just should get recognized for all of their efforts, and they do it not expecting a thank you. So we're trying to go over the top here today. So I'll let Jake Taylor, our head of our north program, speak a little bit as well.
Thank you for the time. Like Brian said, my name is Jake Taylor. I'm the head varsity coach at Lakeville North. And myself and Tim Conboy, we also oversee our high school program and then our youth program, all the way down to the youngest kids that are just starting. So I've been here now for 12 seasons, six years as assistant and six years as a head coach. And so I've been around our facility when Joe and Nick weren't here and when they have been here. And just the things that Brian mentioned, I just can't thank them enough for a hockey program where we're trying to build our program based off of our community, families that live here, kids that grew up here. And to have a place like Ames Arena where they can come and they can see the history of our hockey program, they feel with the colors and everything that we've done inside, they can feel that sense of community. Being part of a Lakeville North hockey program is really special. And the partnership that we've been able to have with Joe and Nick has just been absolutely incredible. So I feel very honored that we can do this tonight for them. And I just really, they deserve so much more than just a thank you. So thanks for letting us be here today.
Thank you. All right.
We'll be adjourned shortly. And with our national anthem, we...
Cool. Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Okay, moving on to donation to Yellow Ribbon Program from our Lakeville liquor customers. And I think I'll turn it over to Tana Wold and our folks from beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And it looks like liquor staff, too.
Mayor and council members, thanks so much for having me tonight. As you're aware, the liquor department's commitment to community engagement has been a cornerstone in our values. And it is with great pleasure that we present the results of our latest endeavor. Throughout the year, we dedicate ourselves to making a positive impact, hosting three annual fundraisers, each directed towards specific causes within our community. And in November, our focus was on the Yellow Ribbon Program, a cause that resonates deeply with us as it extends support to local veterans and their families. I am thrilled to share that through the incredible generosity of our customers, we have surpassed all expectations and shattered our previous fundraising record. Tonight, we're delivering a check for an astounding $35,756.63 to the Yellow Ribbon Program. Allow me to express my gratitude to the individuals standing beside me, my store managers, and our marketing and events coordinator. Their dedication and tireless efforts have been instrumental in achieving this remarkable feat. Without their competitive spirit, creativity, and continuous motivation of our staff, this accomplishment would have not been possible. I have Scott Matthews from Heritage. I have Kelly Singer from Kia Cook. I have Tom Murphy from Galaxy. Leah Pilaya, she's our marketing coordinator, and Jesse Rogers from Kenrick. So I also have the board members from the Yellow Ribbon Program. I have Dave Kess, Ellen Abel, Mary Prozeller, Mo Johnson, and Lindy Cass. So tonight is a celebration of community compassion and the impact we can make when we come together for a shared cause. Thank you to our customers, our team, and everyone who contributed to making this fundraiser an outstanding success. And I'm sure somebody from Yellow Ribbon would like to say something?
First of all, I'd like to just say thank you to all of you, the competitive spirit that resulted in this. Thank you to the people of Lakeville and all that they do to contribute to this. I just wanted to share with you, our city council, just two little quick things about what goes on at the Lakeville Yellow Ribbon. There is a lot, and with funds like this, we continue to look for ways to be able to support the military community of the South Metro, but specifically within Lakeville. So one of those things, tomorrow morning, and I would invite any of you, if you're interested, to stop over at the Heritage Center in the back room where the Yellow Ribbon has an office. There will be about 20 to 25 Vietnam-era veterans that are gathering for coffee. We do that about 51 weeks out of the year. Some of those men that come there on Tuesday mornings, it's the only contact they have with us throughout the year. They don't do any of the other events. They just come in and join us for coffee. The BS gets thrown around quite a bit, but occasionally there's a time for somebody to just reach out and get some help that's there. The other thing I want to just highlight is, you heard the name Mary Prozeller. Mary's back here. She and her husband Wade, who's also a veteran, a while back took on the task, or the opportunity, really, to capture some of the stories of the World War II and Korean-era veterans before they passed. And they've done about 35 of these memory books where they meet with the family. They meet with the service member. They capture the story. They record what was going on, and they put it together, combined with some of the news from the day around that time. I just want to tell you one of those instances. They met with a gentleman, World War II veteran, with him and his wife. And Wade interviewed him, and he got his story, and it came out. And that was a lot of what happens every time that they get together. What was unique about this was that the next day, that his wife called Mary and explained to her that in the 60-plus years of marriage, it was the first time he had slept throughout the night without taking his sleeping pills. Those conversations are meaningful, and that's what some of the things that we do and some of the difference we make. We build relationships with our veterans and then in the hope that sometime we can be there when somebody needs something. And partnerships like this with the Lakeville Liquor Stores and the fundraising that they do allows us to continue that mission. So that's why we're here to say thank you tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, guys, so much for your hard work helping make this happen. And thank you for your continued partnership beyond the Yellow Ribbon. Awesome. Moving on to number six, our consent agenda. These are more routine items, but is there anything you'd like to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, just a few. Item 6G is the first amendment to the naming rights agreement for Hasi Arena. For 20 years, Hasi Arena has been named Hasi Arena. And Glenn and Tim Hasi and their families have generously donated $250,000 to extend that for another 20 years with 10-year extensions at their option after that. So we're very thankful for them. Item 6J is our legislative priorities for the next year. These were reviewed by the city council at your work session, and we made a few changes based on that discussion. And those are attached for your approval tonight. And then items 6U and 6V are our two last labor agreements. One is with LELS, which is our patrol unit, and then Teamsters, which is our public works, parks, utilities, and streets units.
Very good. Any items that anybody on the council wants?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need to note, item 6J legislative priorities. I will be voting for this, but I need the record to reflect that I'm abstaining on item B under additional legislative priorities pertaining to beer and wine in grocery stores because of a potential conflict.
Want to pull it?
No, I don't think.
You, too?
They should pull it.
We should probably pull it both separately.
Yep, we'll do that. Any other? I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda minus the item net, council member J.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll now take up the legislative priorities and I'll take...
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Lakeville 2024 legislative priorities.
Okay, is there a second? Any further discussion?
Do I need to note my...
I think, again, just note that you're abstaining from this section on beer and wine.
Just abstaining from that section.
Yeah.
Item B under additional priorities, so.
Okay. All's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Subventions? Moving on to seven action items, public hearing on the Moments of Lakeville. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson, our city engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
This evening, we have an item for you. There's a couple of action items in your packet, but we're here today to talk about a piece of property here. Before you hear on this is a property called The Moments, developed here. It's a senior living facility, kind of built over multiple phases here, starting from the west to the east. As development progressed, following those stages, the standard process was followed. Stormwater treatment was provided. But then, again, as it progressed, there's some opportunities to incorporate the stormwater design into the site. And as we went along further in the plans, we identified that there wouldn't be the need for a public basin, per se. So as everything evolved, Outlet A, as you see here in your image, originally intended for public purposes, no longer serves that. It all just serves stormwater private to that site. And so you'll see the facilities are underlying there, the stormwater and infiltration there. In addition, the developers requesting that the city vacate this piece in red here. It's excess right-of-way. That was previously purchased and acquired by the city. It no longer also serves a public purpose. It was part of the County Road 46 reconstruction. That was several years ago. And so as we worked through that with the developer, we identified that there is an opportunity for them to utilize that area for their private site. So what you'll see here is an exhibit of the city property. This is the Outlet, previously dedicated to the city by the developer for public purposes. It is no longer needed. It serves only the private stormwater generated on the site. In addition, you'll see here parcel one, this kind of triangle-shaped area. That's the excess right-of-way that, again, is no longer needed and is being requested by the developer. Just kind of separating the two things there. Part of the stipulations in that, then, is the first step would be to vacate the public right-of-way. The second, then, would be the conveyance of the property, Outlet A, and then also the right-of-way. Because it was acquired by the city, the developer is going to be purchasing it from the city. So a purchase agreement is accompanying this request as well. And then lastly, consistent with our state standards, we do need a maintenance agreement for the stormwater because it is privately owned and maintained. And the developer has submitted that as well. So pretty straightforward, kind of the accompaniment here of kind of the final stages of this development. But again, it's kind of a four-step process. This is a public hearing because we are vacating the right-of-way. We did receive one comment from Dakota Electric that they had existing facilities in that right-of-way. They agreed to leave them there with the granting of an easement, which the developer is providing. So that addressed that one public comment. So other than that, pretty straightforward, four steps, and I'll stand for any questions.
Council, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to... If there's any public comment? Seeing none, yep.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? If you're closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing has been closed, and now I will take a motion on the proposal. Easement proposal. Joshua. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about the motion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Hellier?
Aye.
Bermal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion prefaced. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll now move on to item B. This is the 2023 Envision Lakeville Report. And I believe Ms. Miller is going to present to us.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The city of Lakeville initiated the original Envision Lakeville update in 2013. An update was then taken place in 2018. And now this year, 2023, is the 10-year update of the Envision Lakeville process, which is the city's envisioning process. Earlier this year, you all convened a task force. The task force was charged with evaluating several pieces of data and then also giving a recommendation to the city council after all of that. The city worked with Craig Rapp Consulting Group, who led the initiative. Before you, you can see the timeline. The task force came together in May. They met several times over the summer and fall months, and that was where they evaluated the data. Like I said, the task force met a couple, several times to discuss the data and to decide on any recommendations to bring forward to the city council. Some of the pieces of data that they evaluated was a community survey that the city worked with Polco to initiate. The task force also evaluated city council interviews, the EDC strategic plan, and a number of other pieces of data. Some of the key points that we heard from the task force and the other pieces of data, residents of Lakeville really appreciate the small-town feel while living within a suburban community. People are really appreciative of the parks and natural amenities in Lakeville, as well as the quality of schools. Some of the biggest challenges that were highlighted, the coming to end of Lakeville's growth and maintaining what Lakeville has, affordable housing and adding housing options, and community engagement and inclusivity. The task force made a number of recommendations, which I'll highlight here. The first is they have decided to recommend condensing the vision statement. This essentially takes everything that was in the vision statement and just condenses it into a shorter, easier-to-remember vision statement. There are five priorities in Envision Lakeville. The task force is recommending changing one of them from cultivating a sense of community to cultivating a welcoming, inclusive community. There were discussions around more inclusive types of language. That's why they wanted to propose a change to that. Additionally, they want to propose changing the language of the definition of cultivate a welcoming, inclusive community, as you can see on the screen there. There are values that also make up Envision Lakeville. The task force recommends updating one of the definitions of the sense of community and belonging definition, which you can see on the screen. Finally, the task force reviewed all of the owners of the priorities. One change that they also recommend is including the greater Lakeville education community and not specific school districts. With that, the city staff and task force recommend approval of this Envision Lakeville update. And I stand for any questions.
Council, any questions or comments? Joshua?
I'll just comment, you flew through this, which we've done several conversations around this. So I know there are other opportunities for people to see and kind of engage with the full document. But I just wanted to recognize you and the staff's time and energy, the task force's time and energy. I really felt that this was a very broad process that included a lot of voices and a lot of different ways to get that information. And so I know it took quite a bit of time to pull this all together, but it was all in the timeline that you laid out. So well done, and thank you for the final product here.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you to you and to Alan and Justin for kind of taking the staff lead on this and putting this all together. So thank you. And I'll extend my gratitude to the 22 people that were willing to raise their hand and support us in this effort and all those that contributed from boards and commissions to weigh in. So I think we've got some really good feedback to think about over the next couple of years on some of the things that we're going to focus on. So thank you. Do we have to accept this or anything, or this is just a... Okay. So I will take a motion.
Mayor, I move to accept the 2023 Envision Lakeville Report.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about the report? Seeing none? Can we voice vote? All's in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to unfinished and new business. Nothing on unfinished business, but new business report on city administrator's performance evaluation. Is that Joshua? Okay.
Well, first of all, I do have a prepared statement to summarize the performance evaluation, but I do want to publicly recognize Tammy for her work in preparing this whole process and gathering the feedback for Administrator Miller's performance review. It's not just about surveys. It's also about comparative analysis of different cities and coming to the table well-prepared so that we can make a good decision going forward. So with that, the city council completed an annual performance review for city administrator Justin Miller on Monday, December 18th, at a special closed-session meeting. Mr. Miller represents the city's interests on various boards, such as Lakeville Arenas, Dakota 911, ALF, and Municipal Legislative, and the MLC. Mr. Miller is also the lead legislative advocate, working with legislators at both state and federal levels. Mr. Miller... Mr. Miller holds ultimate responsibility for the organization's performance and end results, providing leadership and direction to department heads and staff. Mr. Miller's review focuses on his leadership, presence in the community, and communications with the council, the public, and employees. We find Mr. Miller's performance continues to be at an exceptional level, consistently exceeding expectations and delivering outstanding results for the city. As per Mr. Miller's employment agreement and based on the outcome of this evaluation, we recommend that his annual pay increase to $228,977.60 effective January 1st, 2024.
Very good. I think there's no action required, correct? Because we already did that? Yeah.
You need to approve.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the report.
And the salary increase.
And salary increase.
I move to approve the report and the salary increase that council member Lee described in his comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your continued work for the city. We greatly appreciate it.
Mayor, if you don't mind, real quick, I just appreciate those comments, and just I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the team, the teamwork that this encompassed with all the staff involved, as well as the city council, and I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to announcements, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. Here in this room, our next work session is January 22nd, 2024, at the Public, or excuse me, I always do this, Water Treatment Building on Ipava. And with that, I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and have a safe and Happy New Year. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourn?
Wow, another great year, guys.
Yeah, can you believe it?